We left off on 5B, the Florida inland navigational. And so the next one, Ms. Bach, I'm going to have you read 5C.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a capital improvement revenue note, Series 2016, and the principal amount of not to exceed $1,400,000 to finance certain capital improvements of the city, authorizing the negotiation, execution, and delivery of a loan agreement with respect to the issuance of the Series 2016 note to be issued in any series or sub-series as the authorized officer deems necessary and appropriate for the city. Such note to be a limited obligation of the city payable from a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-add-to-law revenues as pledged herein, providing for the rights and securities of the owner of the note, designating the Series 216 note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation pursuant to Section 265b 3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the purchaser of the note and providing for an effective date requested by the Finance Director.
We have our finance advisor, financial advisor here to answer any questions, but the bottom line to this, it's borrowing $1.4 million at an interest rate of 2.47%. And it's a fixed rate for 15 years. And it's going to be used in a project, if you approve this, a project that's under my report, which is the Airport Access Road. And it will be coupled with grant monies to finish that project, which includes a bridge project. But Craig is here, Craig Dunlap, our financial advisor. And of course Cindy's here as well.
I think we ought to say, ask him to say something just because he's been here for so long. Absolutely.
Mr. Dunlap?
Craig Dunlap with Dunlap and Associates. It's a beautiful day in Vero Beach. Mr. O'Connor has summarized this very well. We did get competitive bids here. Winning bidder, we got only one bid from BB&amp;T. Other banks that we solicited indicated that the size was a little bit too small for them, or they weren't interested at this particular time. It was a good rate. Actually, we bid this a second time because of the costs associated with it. But the rate we got the second time around was a little bit better than we got the first time around. So from that perspective, it was a good thing. But if any of the council members or the mayor have any questions of me?
I just wonder why no one else was interested. It's just strange.
Well, interest among banks changes all the time. They have set aside a certain amount of money for tax-exempt debt one day, and then it gets all taken up. And they don't have any money left. You know, it's not a bottomless pit of their capital for tax-exempt purposes. In some instances, banks have limits on the size. They don't want to go below 5 million, or they want populations of 25,000 or 30,000 or greater. A lot of banks have different criterias. So in this particular instance, I just don't know all the reasons for it. But the demand on the part of banks for tax-exempt loans varies all the time.
Mr. Jay, I had asked Ms. Larson earlier, when we first considered this, if we should talk with Wells Fargo, since that was our regular bank, why they didn't bid. Cindy, did you hear anything from them?
I think you and I, you and I talked about maybe reaching out to the public.
Yeah, I didn't reach out to Wells Fargo.
I think they were going to do this after the award because you were still in the process of...
I thought that was one of the ones you reached out to.
Well, we did reach out to them, but they didn't. I mean, we reached out to, we had a very extensive list, you know, Sun Bank, Wells Fargo, Bank of America, PNC, JP Morgan.
Yeah, but the local ones that we do business with, I would have expected. I mean, I don't have any problem going forward.
But they were certainly sent a copy of the solicitation.
Yeah, 2.47%, even at $1.4 million is pretty good by today's standards anyway.
That's very good.
It was a very good rate. And it's a 15-year fixed rate, as Mr. O'Connor indicated. Debt service on an annual basis is about 100, just shy of 115,000 per year.
Is there any member of the public that'd like to ask any questions?
If not, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Second.
All right, we got a third.
You said second.
Well, no, it's just very encouraging.
Mr. Fox?
What kinds of participation.
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're looking at 6A. Ms. Fox, go ahead and let's go ahead and read this, if you would.
Okay, this is an ordinance that would be heard on April 19th, an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by Jack C. Gregory Jr. and Paul Markula to annex property located at 3870 Indian River Boulevard, containing 7.46 acres, more or less, pursuant to the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director.
Okay, just out of curiosity, I've got this listed as a quasi-judicial process.
Yes, sir. It will be a quasi-judicial hearing.
All right, now, is this the quasi-judicial? Or are we setting for a date?
No, when it's heard on April 19th.
My apologies, this is just, we're just reading the thing. That's right.
Yeah. It's a small-scale rezoning.
We'll move on to City Clerk's matters.
Okay, we do have two applications for the Fire Pension Board. Mr. Dwayne Blumick and Mr. Kenneth Chapnam would like to serve on that board. And at this time, we don't have any other applications.
And are there two openings?
There's two openings.
Motion to approve both applicants.
Second?
With a public comment? If not, council comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I also did attach a list of the different openings that we have, and I'll just go through them real quick. We have openings on the Code Enforcement Board, the Historic Downtown Economic Development Zone Committee, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Tree and Beautification Commission, the Utilities Commission, and the Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Do you have any applicants for any of those that haven't?
I did just receive an application yesterday for someone that would like to serve on the Tree and Beautification Commission.
Didn't you have an applicant? Wasn't there an applicant for the Finance or Utilities or Finance only?
There was one that, from a gentleman who wished to either serve on the Code Enforcement Board or the Utilities Commission, and you did put him on the Code Enforcement Board.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, would you just kind of send that in a memo to us as to what positions are vacant?
Okay, sure.
I greatly appreciate that. City Managers Matters.
My first item is the tentative agreement between the City of Vero Beach and the Police Benevolent Association. This refers to the lieutenants. And I think there are five officers involved. We do have Jason Odom here, and Gabrielle is here as well to answer any questions of what we're doing. But Jason, if you don't mind, if you can give an overview?
Sure. Thank you, council members. You may recall from, I think it was last month, we had the rank-and-file police contract before you. This one with the lieutenant unit is largely similar to that. There are a couple of differences. Just want to go over those with you briefly. The primary changes to the lieutenant agreement are the pay increase, which the council heard about with the rank-and-file. We did do a little bit of a difference in the percentages, which was agreed to by the lieutenants in that unit, to try to get some separation based on seniority within that unit. Same thing we kind of did with the rank-and-file unit, trying to get some separation based on the amount of times officers have been in that position. We also included that master's degree incentive. There is one lieutenant of the five that has a master's degree. So we include that same master's degree incentive that you have for the rank-and-file contract. We also had the $200 increase to the uniforms, which was based on an IRS tax issue that we had. We restored Good Friday and Veterans Day like we did for the other employees as well. For the lieutenants, they don't receive overtime because they're exempt, one difference. But we did put that back as a city holiday like we have for the other employees as well. And those were the only changes. Just so you know, I think this has come up before. Pay increases are on base salary, not on, not with the incentives tagged on and anything like that. So those are the only real changes to the agreement. We think it's a good agreement.
The birthday was eliminated.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Back when we did that holiday exchange, where we eliminated two holidays, the officer's birthday was recognized as a compensatory day off, and that was taken out of the contract. So thank you, Mr. O'Connor. So that was taken out, since we put back the holidays.
All right. And this does include a wage opener in years two and three, correct?
Yes, Mr. Turner, it does.
Mr. O'Connor, what are you looking for us to do with this?
I would recommend approval of this contract and that we proceed with signing it with the Police Benevolent Fund.
I'll make a motion.
We think it's well, it's within our budget, and it lines up all the contracts now at three years.
This is the second in a row, a three-year contract with the lieutenant unit, which is fantastic. It's also the second three-year agreement in a row with the rank-and-file unit, which is fantastic. Prior to that, we had years without a continuous contract, so.
Before we get a motion, is there any public comment on this?
I was going to say, we may have to write.
Seeing none, are we entertaining a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this. That's the motion. And this comment, Jason, thank you for all the work you've done. I think it's very important. The people that take care of the people of the city, work for the city, whether they're in the police force foremost, of course, but Public Works and so on. And to have contracts in place rather than the situations we've had in past years, I think is very good. You know, the implication is if you don't have contracts, you have some dissension, and that may reflect itself in attitude. I think it's, you're to be commended, and I think we should move forward on this. I made my motion, though. Second?
Second. Third, fourth?
That's right.
I just like to add, yeah, and thank you, Ms. Maness and Mr. O'Connor for all the, yeah, all the hard, long hours as well with working, Mr. Odom, to getting us, I think, a fine agreement firm in place.
Well, I hope it's, this works out for everybody. I know sometimes on agreements, it doesn't necessarily work out for all parties. But seeing that there is no challenges, and seeing that we seem to be very agreeable on this, I would go ahead and call the question. Should, let's go ahead and do this as a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
5 to 0. Mr. O'Connor, you are still...
My second item is the Airport Access Road improvements. This is Phase 1 through 3. Award of the construction contract and approval of the work order for CEI services. It's a Florida Department of Transportation project number. And what we are doing here is awarding a contract at $3.8 million to the low bid of the street, of the road project, plus $475,000 and some money for the oversight and review. And it is the company that helped us get to this point with the project. The total project cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of $4.7 million, but there are grants at about $3.6 million. And I do want to make a notation here. These were two departments that really came together on this project, the airport being one, and the Public Works Department to recognize where funding possibilities were because the airport got grants that we would not have been able to acquire without their assistance. And so I think it's a very good project. We are recommending awarding of the contract.
And we'll finally get our bridge repaired?
Yes, ma'am.
Money's gone, yay!
I think it's the 50-year-old bridge that...
Yeah, it's well due.
Yes.
Okay, is there any comment from the public on this? Seeing none, comment from the council or a motion?
Make a motion, we accept.
I'll stall a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. I do have one question for the city manager in regards to the power plant visioning process. I know we had talked privately about a scope of work. Reason being is I'd like to see some type of a definition of scope of work so that we could possibly start comparing some kind of a competitive process for that visioning process when it comes back around.
We can do that. If there are any ideas that the council wants to submit, please let us know. But what I'm thinking about is trying to keep this thing very cost, lower cost if at all possible. I think we need to look at the transportation portion of this because of that intersection at 17th and the congestion that is there now and what would happen. But the second thing is the land use of those three partials of area. This project is going to be pretty far into the future before we would actually start seeing any major redevelopment. But at the same time, I think doing something that sort of controls what the land use is, gives us a concept of what the land use of those partials, and how we're going to address the transportation issues. That keeps the scope relatively short. A lot of people have talked about doing the economic impact and all this. But until we get closer to a day that we're going to actually see some development, especially on the wastewater and the power plant site, I don't think that would be money wisely spent at this particular stage. So we're looking at transportation and land use would be the scope.
The wastewater site is how, how many years out?
Well, 2021 is when we have some debt service that would go away, that you could do. But it's a six-year planning process to begin with.
Uh huh, thank you. What I'm looking for is consensus from the council, if it's okay to, if the staff just draws up that scope.
I agree with your position, Mr. Mayor.
I do as well.
And I like your suggestions, Mr. O'Connor.
Tim McGary, and if there's something else that goes in there, but we'll come up, we'll come back with some type of scope for council consideration.
Is there any matters or questions for the city manager? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and go to the attorney. Is there any questions or matters from the attorney?
Just wanted to ask if you could give us kind of a litigation update. Received a copy of the order denying Charles Fritz's motion for summary judgment. I assume we're, we'll be going to trial?
No, no. I'm sorry, which one was it? We've got so many good groups going on.
On Charles Fritz's motion for...
Okay, Fitz, the declaratory judgment action. The judge did deny. They requested a rehearing. And it's the fastest I've ever seen the judge shirman and deny it. We got that today. The judge has denied their request for a rehearing. Anticipate there'll be some action on our side to try to get the case closed. Anticipate that pretty quickly. Then, of course, they would have the opportunity to appeal that. The petitions for resurciari, which are in the appellate division of the Circuit Court, those are, that case is still pending. Mr. Frost did file the ruling in this case. They're so interrelated, he's filed that ruling in the appellate case, whether or not the court there will even consider it because being a petition for it is resurciari, it's a very limited review by the appellate division. But he filed it anyway, which, which can't hurt. On the diesel plant, there was scheduled now trial for June 20th. But it appears that we, there's some conflicts for that week for some of the people involved in the, in the case. It could get rescheduled. And remember, that's with a judge out of Sanford now that the case was assigned to. Of course, we still haven't heard anything from the Forest Supreme Court on the appeal of the county commission's PSC ruling. Anticipate, I don't know if you've, Jim, if you've talked to Chef Fanny about the city's response to the Shores' latest petition at the Public Service Commission on the territorial agreement. But we anticipate the city would be responding to that.
And then we have also asked for information from the town of Indian River Shores as to substantiate some of their claims.
For our next council meeting, could you prepare a summary on these different issues of what our expenses have been to date?
Sure, we can get that.
Thanks. Sure.
I'm confused a little bit about what happened with the... There was a, it was a sit-down in Tallahassee between Chef and Indian River Shores regarding the rates. And they're, they're still going at each other on that. Are they, or not going at each other, but they're still talking to each other about that?
That was not rates. That was only limited to the purchase of our system.
Yes, that's what I meant.
And so, yes, they are, that is still under discussion because Chef told Indian River Shores, their representatives, that he would start digging down into his numbers because there were a couple of questions asked. So he's still in that process. But he's going to bring in Bill Hammond and a couple of other people to double-check his numbers to go through that.
What I'm interested in, in understanding at the, at the end of this is the words that go into what our, our price is, the way we figured our price, and the words that go into Indian River Shores, what they're saying is a fair price. And by, by the words, I mean the assumptions made on each side. And so we can sort of see what, what the reason for the difference is.
Something very important here, and this gets lost in the cloud of dust. Indian River Shores is not asking to buy our system. Florida Power and Light is asking to buy our system.
I understand, yeah.
So when you talk about what Indian River Shores has come up with, their numbers, you know, I think the last one was 10.2 to 14 million or something. But the, the real player here is Florida Power and Light. And I think Chef has made all of our information available to them. And so we're, we're still doing that. But it's, you know, he, he can come up, and I think he's given us a couple of reports to explain his. But now, we don't have a way of going side by side because I don't think there's a joint report being produced.
No, and that's what I'm interested in. When these, when they sit down and compare numbers, what is the assumptions behind them coming up with their numbers is what I'm, what I'm interested in. Because we get asked about, why, why the big difference? And why, why, why can't we agree on this? Jim, do you want me to try that one?
Well, I think there's a fundamental here. You have a buyer and a seller. If the buyer's setting the price, it's usually going to be lower. If the seller's setting the price, it's going to be higher. But Dick, please, on the...
Well, no, Indian River Shores has never come up with any numbers or any justification numbers. They, they came up with the numbers Jim talked about. And basically, what they talked about in mediation and all along the road was that if we had $10 million or $15 million, we could, we could deal with the debt or possibly the transfer for a period of years. They've never looked at the situation we have with FMPA. And it's been in the press here recently quite, quite a bit. In fact, it was in the Press Journal, that we do, there is no exit cost from, from the three projects, Stanton 1, Stanton 2, and St. Lucy. So therefore, you know, the problem is that we're looking at, at making some estimates of how far underwater we are in those particular agreements. The other thing that has been skipped in all this in the $64 million number, which I'm sure is going to change one way or the other, is the contingent liabilities were never looked at. We've talked about this before in this forum, but essentially, at Sanviadro in California, Three Mile Island, and now at Crystal River, you know, the problem you run into is if there's a problem in, at St. Lucy Number 2, and you're talking billions of dollars, and we have 1.4% of it. And so there's never been any consideration of all the contingent liability in any number. Put another way, what Chef attempted to do was put values on something that are very hard or almost impossible with values on because we don't have the data. And put another way, Indian River Shores was offering as a potential buyer an amount of money and suggesting what we could do with the money. But it didn't come anywhere close. It was 25% of his number, not taking into account the contingent liabilities, which are substantial. So I don't know, Jim, do you agree with what I said? What I'm, what I'm, in my own mind, what I'm, what I boil it down to is that if, if Indian River Shores is 10% or 18%, 8% of our total obligation, they would get 10% of the cost, whether it's 450 million or 650 million, or whatever the number is. But on the other side, if they're, if Indian River Shores or Florida Power and Light is saying, "Well, we'll pay you X number of dollars per meter." And, and that's the, that's the difference in assumptions, then I can really understand what's, what's going on. Well, what Indian River Shores put forward with, the deal on it was, correct my number if I'm wrong, but roughly $181 million that Florida Power and Light offered. So they're saying 8% of that's 15 million. The problem with that was if we had sold the entire system, we would have sold the contingent liabilities. We would have sold our continuing obligation to Stanton 1, Stanton 2, and St. Lucy. We'd been out from all, all of that stuff. So, I mean, it's, it's the typical apples and oranges. In other words, they're talking apples. You could have sold the entire thing for that. Well, we couldn't because we haven't figured out how to satisfy it.
I think that where we're at, I believe we are still waiting for some information back from FMPA to Chef Wright. And I think we had tasked Chef that when they got these numbers, ironed out that they would come back to council and give us a report.
That is correct. He's, again, drilling down into the numbers. The other thing we got to remember, we are in court. We're being sued. And so therefore, we need to be mindful of that because a judge one of these days could say, "You've got to abandon your utilities in Indian River Shores." Now, when he says that, there's going to have to be compensation to public facilities. And at that point, you'll be negotiating a price that will have more than likely be approved by a court somewhere to do it. But that, that will be the deciding point. If we should win, then we need to negotiate a price, again, coming back to the concept of buyer and seller. We as a seller set a price of a going concern. It changes the dynamics of what you're actually selling at that point. And it becomes, because if the judge says you've got to vacate and the premises, then you don't have a going concern. You just have a lot of assets sitting on, on poles. And then you get down to another number. So those are concepts. And we're getting, we're getting closer every day to having one of these judges in the court rule. And it just, we're going through all that exercise. We're going back to the Public Service Commission. It's anticipated from there, we'll probably go to the Supreme Court again. And so, and depending on how they rule, and you've got the attorney, but, I mean, the Supreme Court could be very specific, or they could be very broad in their determination. That's going to be probably the law of the land when it's all said and done.
But I think one thing we can all be clear at this point is that we can't underestimate Indian River Shores resolved to continue to pursue this through litigation. I think that that certainly shown that. If people thought, "Oh, well, they're going to back off," or whatever else along with this draws on. And I think there is that real risk that, yeah, the court rules against us, and then we're going to be in a fire. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and there's no question.
Need to be, continue that conversation.
Yeah, but, yeah, we have to continue that. And even through the court process, we have to continue that. But it does change the dynamics of how you sell the assets.
Mr. O'Connor, the number that you threw out, I'm going to go to the 10 or 14 million, and I'm with you, whatever it was. That number that was submitted to you, was it submitted with any kind of a breakdown of how that number came to be? In other words, were you provided with something that said, "Here's why we..."
No, sir, I have not seen anything. No, sir, I have not seen anything. That was, as a matter of fact, I read it in the newspaper, because that was the report given to the council or the town of Indian River Shores. I have not seen anything.
Mr. Wright, given any document can we request, if he has anything from, from Indian River Shores substantiating their, their number?
We can do that, yeah.
You know, as far as documents concerned, we have, Mr. Frost has got, got an issue, and then Indian River Shores was supposed to turn, turn over where they owned something, wherein we had utility assets on it, remembering that the substation, we owned the property, remembering A1A is owned by the state of Florida, remembering that most of the streets, 90% of the streets in Indian River Shores are private gated communities. And so therefore, you know, we, we have repeatedly, for several months now, asked for where we have assets. And at this point, I think he gave them a week, didn't he, Jim, to, before he filed a motion to compel them to identify them. One of the problems we have here is we're not getting any information from Indian River Shores, Mr. Howell, and that, that's the problem. I mean, it's hard to deal with a nebulous problem. Not disagreeing with Mrs. Turner. You can say what you can say in court, but, you know, at some point, you have to say, okay, well, city hall, we really do own that, or we own the street, or control it.
Is there any other questions for the city attorney? If not, before going on to city council matters, we will open it up for public comment.
You're doing great.
Mr. Gafanti, you've been very patient. You want to say anything? Okay. With that, we'll go on to individual council members matters. I did attend the gallery stroll. I think it's real important to continue to support our arts district. Attended the first annual archery foundation, which is a foundation which is geared towards teaching kids archery. That's a really wonderful after-school activity, and they've actually got a couple of state, state record holders there. It's been very effective. Attended the Indian River County Victims Rights Coalition. I guess we've got a couple of police officers that has, had a couple awards, and I'm certainly hoping that in the future, we can have those two officers come forward, and we can recognize them for their, their achievement. Under the Oaks this year was absolutely fantastic. To, to all of those who helped put that on, it's a great big thank you. We've, we're starting to bring in different types of art there. Actually, talking to them and possibly expanding that next year, but we're going to see how that, that turns out. St. Patrick's Day parade's coming up this Saturday for, for downtown Vero Beach. The last Saturday, I guess a lot of us showed up for the St. Patrick's Day parade on the ocean side. It was, and the weather was very agreeable. We really enjoyed that. And I got a great, great event with youth sailing, and Mr. Winger was very gracious to show us how a lot of that, a lot of that worked. Unfortunately, you have to be out on the water to really, to really see the, the kids really put all the effort into the racing. And with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Old.
I just was around over the weekend, and this, Under the Oaks was amazing. The number of people out and around, I'm not sure how they could expand that for next year.
Well, there's a few places they could put a couple more, I think.
But we have expanded to having three days, and I think there was many people in the public that didn't realize that Under the Oaks was open on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I think we could, yeah, maybe.
It was amazing.
Help them out with that, too. Although, we had good crowds on Friday, too.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, Ms. Turner?
I attended the MPO meeting, and we had a presentation with the bicycle advisory committee. And it was great to hear about Vero Cycling. They now have 250 members in the bike club. They have a new rider program for people that are just trying, you know, getting out to riding on the streets that would like that confidence and training. They can be contacted through verocyclingclub.org. And they were also encouraging everybody for April the 9th, for the hibiscus ride. They are going to have a wide variety of ride lengths, going from a short 10-mile, and the long, the long ride was somewhere over 100 miles. So anyway, you have various ranges of biking activity that you can participate in, and encouraging people to get involved with that. Wanted to congratulate Vero Beach rowing crew. They participated in the Sebastian Open Regatta, and the teams raced 1500 meters head-on-head. And the crew earned gold medals in the women's open eight, women's junior varsity eight, and the men's four. So we can be proud of our young crew members. It is season, lots of exciting things going, and wonderful activities going on in the community. With the sheriff's barbecue, was glad to see the Vero Beach police dogs were out there, and they were, they were part of the presentation. So it was good to see our, our newest dogs working. Habitat hoedown, we had families that were waiting for homes or working to getting their own homes there, participating in events, so that was wonderful. At the EcoFest, out of the Environmental Learning Center, they're looking at some other programs to expand it, to appeal to, to some of the older people and not just be a kids' event. This year, they had several short lectures on nature photography, which attended, which were wonderful. Wanted to remind everybody, on Saturday, March the 19th, there'll be a rally at the rails. This is part of protest against all aboard, move them west. It'll be at 11 o'clock, and it will be right out here at 19th Street to the 20th Street rail crossings. Let me see out there.
Mr. Winger?
Oh, Mr. Kramer didn't mention how many swimmers we had at the regatta over the weekend. I gotta have to tell you, there had to be 20 boats that turned over. Some of them turned over two and three times. And of course, for me, this is baseball season. I love baseball, and I'm going to go to the Jackie Robbins game, and I'm going to parks all over Florida. I'm also going to high school parks all over Florida. My grandson pitched five successful Indians at Sebastian River. He plays for South Forks. Unfortunately, or fortunately for Indian River County, Sebastian River beat South Forks from Martin County. But baseball season, boy, I tell you, it's great.
Mr. Howell?
Well, I really don't have a whole lot to speak of this week, but I did attend the St. Patty's Day parade over the weekend. Many of you were there, and it was a nice time, and the weather was a little warm, but it worked out well, and looking forward to doing it again next year.
You can make the most important motion.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
So moved. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Very much.